I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:34 PM. I would like to also appoint Carol as a full member, so we will have a five-member board tonight. I do not have any additions or deletions to the agenda. I would like to, first of all, since I noticed Kim came on, to find out if Kim has any update, so that she can sort of get out of here, unless she wants to sit for the entire meeting.
Thanks Lance. Our committee did meet last week, on Tuesday, the 24th. We were able to finalize all the comments for the economic development plan, and we'll be sending that off to the consultant. I did put a call out to Adam, and I'm just waiting to hear back from him prior to sending that off. And we did receive the water section from Todd, and we are going to be reviewing that on our meeting on December 8th. I did note that you guys have a meeting on the 7th. We won't have any more of an update on the 7th, as we don't meet until the night after your meeting. Chaz and Lori joined us for the meeting last week.
Would you be able to send us Todd's work on the water?
Yes.
So that for those of us that can attend a meeting, have an opportunity to read it before your meeting?
Yes, I can do that.
And then just one other thing, I wanted to make you aware, we have it, but at our last planning board meeting, I was unsure if we could appoint someone to the master plan committee that was not a town resident. And so after the meeting, I reviewed our town charter and couldn't find anything that stated that. And I also verified with town council that we can appoint someone. So our plan is later on is to appoint Cynthia, but you're gonna have to, she's gonna have to get re-sworn in, so that we're all legit.
Okay.
All right, I just wanted to give you that. I would hate to have anything thrown out of the master plan committee, because someone complained that we had a member voting that was not sworn in.
Yeah, so we had one right in the beginning that wasn't a town resident, so I was confident that wasn't gonna be a problem, but I'm glad you were able to research that.
Yeah, we did. I just wanted to make you aware of that. That's why we did not appoint her. I just, I was not unsure. I mean, I wasn't, you know, wasn't sure, okay?
Yep, no problem.
Any other planning board members have any questions for Kim, so that she can enjoy the rest of her evening?
No, I'll be definitely attending on the 12/8, so I'll see you then, Kim.
Okay, thanks Chaz.
All right. All right, so let's see if we can squeak through on the approval of the minutes. So has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Is there any discussion?
I had made a change, Beth. Did you see that? I wasn't sure. Was that the right way? And we'll talk later about how to make edits, but...
Sure, yeah, no, that's fine. I think that you had changed one word to "interesting," is that right?
Yep. Well, it was "interesting," and I think it was supposed to be "interested."
Okay, yep.
And Beth, and I don't know if this is important or not, but when you had listed the attendees up in the very start of the document?
Yep.
You missed a few people.
No, that's good.
Hold on. You didn't have Gary Amadon?
Okay.
Or Gregory?
Yeah, I think Gary was down on the public hearing, yeah.
They were down there in the public hearing, but does it make sense to also include them as part of the attendees? Because, you know, like included Bill Wright out, or what have you?
Okay, yep.
I just noticed that. I mean, I don't know if it's...
Okay, all right, so I'll put them up top. Where we go? Okay, yep, yep, others present? Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. I will add Mr. Amadon.
And then Gregory, and then Joan.
Okay. And Joan? Okay, thank you.
A void.
Uh, no, Bukowicz.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussions on the minutes? Okay, if so, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting? And I'm sort of jumping back and forth. Our minutes of November the 16th, 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 2020, the 16th.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second then.
Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
I'll abstain.
Okay, and Lance votes yes. All right, so let's move right on to the A&R on West Meadow Road. Stan, you're muted.
How's that?
That's better.
So this is a property on West Meadow Road that's, oh, it's about 97, 98 acres. The owners are cutting off one A&R lot and creating a parcel, and the remaining 94.6 acres is scheduled to be sold to Mass Fish and Wildlife. The lot, the lot meets the frontage acreage requirements, et cetera.
I guess, I guess I'm confused. I looked at it. So currently, right now, there's two lots, right? A Lot 1 and a Lot 2?
No, that's what we're creating.
All right, what is it, what is it right now?
Right now, it's just one big piece of land.
Okay, and so when I looked at the A&R, there was a parcel there?
Right, there's a little parcel down in the corner that is gonna be conveyed to one of the abutters.
Okay, so one huge lot is going to be, you're gonna create two lots out of it and a parcel?
Correct.
And the second lot is going to be sold to Fish and Wildlife?
That's, it's currently, they currently have an agreement to do that, yes.
Okay. I guess I, when I looked at this, the one issue, or the issue that, two issues that I have, is that, first of all, the names are incorrect on the application.
I'd have to look at that. I don't have the application in front of me, but I believe those are the names on the application. I think Beth and I went around and around on that several times.
Yeah, those are the property owners.
Hold on, I gotta pull it up. It basically, and maybe it's because I... It, Joseph does not have a last name.
It's Iodice.
Pardon?
Joseph Iodice.
Yeah, but on the, on the owner of record, it says Debbie Iodice, comma, Joseph, comma, Sylvia Diane.
Sylvia Diane, Diane Silva.
Sylvia Diane. Debbie, it should say, it should say Joseph, comma, Debbie Iodice, Sylvia Diana, or however. You're right, it doesn't say Joseph Iodice, but that was my intent.
Yeah, I mean, can we fix that, can we fix that so it's proper? And then the other issue I have is that we have three owners, correct?
Correct.
Only two have basic, well, let's see, well, that's probably not a big one. Never mind, we only have two people basically consenting to have you represent them, when we have three owners.
The owners, the owners did sign that supplemental thing that I sent to Beth.
Okay.
Signing, allowing, well, agreeing that their signatures were acceptable on the form. And there is Debbie Iodice, I'm looking at it right now. There's Joe, I have, I have authorization from Joseph Iodice, Diane Silva, Anna Rogers, and Debbie Iodice.
Okay, I just don't see it on what we have for the application with Debbie.
I have...
I see Joe and Diane.
Page down, or the two more pages is Debbie.
Okay, I just don't have that in the material I'm looking at.
Oh, sorry. Couple of varieties.
Okay, I mean, if we could, is it, just, can we just fix the owner of record on the application? So it's, it's correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Did the phone, the person on the phone get identified by name?
That was Carol.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I told you I was technically challenged.
Hey, you're here, I'm happy.
All right. Are there any waivers that you're seeking, Stan?
Just hold on a minute, let me get the drawing back here in front of me. I believe that the... The scale... Yes, the scale is not 1 inch equals 40, it's 1 inch equals 100.
Okay. Can I have a motion to have the scale waived?
Toe moved.
Second.
All right, I'm sort of bouncing back and forth here. Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Okay, and Lori?
Yes.
And Lance votes yes. So, in looking at the A&R stand?
Yes.
And believe me, I'm a little bit challenged here, but where does it say the frontage for Lot 2?
In the, if you look on, in, on the plan, look on the, where it says locus Lot 2 in the upper left-hand corner?
Yes.
The frontage is shown there, 1,485 feet.
How come, all right, it's a locus.
The locus of Lot 2, because that's such a large piece. It's shown at 1 inch equals 250 feet, but the frontage shows on that.
I'm having to do the Zoom on my computer, so hold on. Okay. All right, does any other board members have any questions on the A&R?
I want to be clear, so Lot 2, the 94.6 acres, that's what's being sold to Fish and Game?
Correct.
Okay. And... You're, so you're, we're doing Lot 1, Lot 2, and then parcel A, and parcel A is going to be?
Parcel A will be conveyed to an abutter.
So that's the conveyance there, okay.
Or, or it will stay with Lot 1, but the intent is for that to be conveyed to an abutter. But it's labeled not a building lot.
Yep. I don't have any further questions on this.
Any other board members have any questions on the A&R? And Beth, I do assume that both you in the building inspector reviewed this as well?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the A&R?
I'll make a motion to approve the A&R.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Lance, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Hold on, guys, I'm trying to get back to my agenda.
So with that, there are now three A&Rs for board members to sign. At your next availability.
Okay, and I assume that on those three A&Rs, that all taxes are current?
That's an assumption on one of them, so we'll just say yes for the two.
Okay, and then we'll sign the third one after you validate that, correct?
Yes. I'm waiting on that.
Okay. All right, so we're a little bit late, but at 6:45, continuance of the public hearing, application for stormwater management permit. And this is for Three Wheeler Road. And so are there any board members that have any questions on the decision that Beth wrote? Okay, I have, and I gotta pull it up here, Beth, I've got two comments. Hold on a second while I pull it up.
First of all, I have Veronica on there, so I will change the header.
Oh, we like, we like Veronica, and we may appoint her back to the planning board tonight.
I did make that change, I did, I did, but I didn't know if you... And Chaz is a full member, so we got that. I did make that change.
Okay. All right, so the only, and this is minor one, is there's a formatting issue on the public hearing date of September 10th, 2020. It's indented in where it shouldn't, you see it?
Yes, I do.
Okay, that was my only comment.
Okay, perfect.
And so the decision reflects basically approval of the existing stormwater permit? Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the decision for Three Wheeler Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, how do you vote, Chaz?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance, yes.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
Who was the second?
I did.
Geraldine was the second, Beth.
Thank you.
All right, we're so efficient that we really can't start talking about... All right, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? For Three Wheeler Road?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on Three Wheeler Road.
I'll second.
Chaz seconds. Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Lance, yes. And so Gary, you got on just in time to basically witness us approving it, and so we'll have to go ahead and get into Town Hall and sign that, so it can be filed with the town clerk.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Gary Amadon. Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right. All right, 7:15, so we have to work on something else, so we've already gone through 3.1, which was the Townsend Master Plan Committee update. All right, 3.2 Draft Proposal Scenic Road Regulations. I didn't get that done until today. What I did is I basically looked at what we had for all of our adjoining towns. Ashby probably has the most comprehensive bylaw with regards to scenic roads. So I created a document that basically has the scenic roads regulations or bylaws for each of the adjoining towns. Ashby has one. Groton has one. Lunenburg does not have one, and I actually spoke to Adam at the Land Use Office in Lunenburg, and he confirmed they did not have one, and Pepperell did not have one. So I put together for you a document that basically provided the exact text for each of the towns. I also included the bylaw that we have and the regulations that we have. And then I also included the state, the state law, or the state regulation. I then also, so that was one document, and then on another document, I basically drafted a sample bylaw. Does it make sense for everyone to have an opportunity to review those, so that we can discuss it at our next meeting?
Yes.
You know, because you didn't get it till the last minute. Now, just one thing to sort of give you as a preface. Adam had recommended that really, to be really effective, you need to have a bylaw on the Scenic Roads Act. And the only thing that we have in our bylaws is with respect to creating a driveway or an entrance. And so we do not have a bylaw in place to protect or to prevent someone from just removing a stone wall. We only have a bylaw in place for cutting down trees and removing trees and altering a stone wall for a driveway. We do have a regulation that, I don't think it's clear, but it basically is not as enforceable as a bylaw. And that was Adam's recommendation a while ago. And so I drafted a bylaw that basically had the language in it that you could not, you know, destroy, you could not, could not modify or do anything to a stone wall or cutting and removal of trees without, you know, going through the planning board. And I did it with the public right-of-way, which is defined in our bylaws from 20 feet from the center of the road. So that's what I drafted, and unless there's any questions, we'll just wait till our next planning board meeting, so everyone has an opportunity to review all the stuff.
So, so what you're saying is, I'm sorry, I'm asking clarifying questions, Lance, you know me.
That's all right.
So you're, you're, the article, or the, you have article, what is that? XIX here, scenic roads?
Yeah.
145-91 scenic roads?
Yeah.
Is that what you were talking about, about what you?
That's what I drafted.
Gotcha, okay. So the recommendations from Town Council was that we needed to have something in? He suggested that we do put something in there for scenic roads?
He basically said that if you want to have something that is really enforceable, you make it a bylaw, not a regulation, if you know what I mean.
Correct.
So that's why it's there.
Okay, so I think that makes a lot of sense right there, because that was actually my thought. I, we can be less restrictive, because that's what I'd really like to see. I mean, just to keep the flavor of the town, but then again, be not so restrictive.
Yeah, so I basically, the scenic road only applies for designated roads within the town's right-of-way. So in other words, if you're 25 feet from the center of the road, then you do not require a special permit.
Okay, so I'm, I'm okay for talking about this at a later point, but thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to have an opportunity for you guys to sort of review other, what other towns have and what I just drafted, before we discuss it.
Well, thank you for the work you did on this, Lance.
Oh, you're more than welcome. You know, that's, that's why I get the big bucks.
Me too.
All right, let me find the agenda again. All right, let's see, we're still away from 7:15, so DLT MRPC Townsend Draft on Age-Restricted Housing, 3.3. I thought it looked, I thought it looked good.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I just had one, I just had one thought that I just shared with the board to see how they feel about it. If you have two people, do we need to have any language about? It says 55, so, you know, if, if, you know, so if I want to, you know, if I want to have this applied to me, what about my 32-year-old wife?
This is Carol. I could tell you from Westford, when I lived in Westford.
Yes.
The 55 housing, one person had to be 55. You could have a 32-year-old wife.
Okay.
So, because when I got divorced, I wanted, they were just building the 55, but I was 54 and a half, and I went down to look at them, and they said, no. I couldn't buy it because I wasn't 55, but if I had, like my father, sign it, I could live there.
Okay.
But I had, somebody had to be 55 in order to actually buy the condominium, but I could have a boy toy living with me.
Okay, I was just, that was my only thought when I was reading it, is do we need to specify one, one person has, one, you know, for a couple? You know, and where I, where I saw it is when they said, no more than two bedrooms.
Okay, I, I'm just telling, but I know in Westford, they were very strict. They had to be 55 in order to purchase the condominium. At least one person had to be.
Okay.
I don't, whether you have to put that, we may have to put that in there, but I'm not sure how that gets worded.
Well, if it's, if it's an age-restricted development, they would be... Would they be monitored by DHCD, Lance?
I don't know. I know that for, I know that for Townsend Woods, for example, because I asked them, they have to have, they, the manager of Townsend Woods enforces the age restriction.
Correct, so that's the manager of the facility?
Yeah.
If we had, let's say if I went out and I, I had four townhouses built as age-restricted?
I think it needs to be policed, is my concern.
Right. Well, we'd have to really look at where that would go.
Are you thinking, are you planning on doing an age-restricted development-type condo association area, or are you just looking at a house here, or condo, or a townhouse here or there? Where it might be harder to, to lease it, I mean?
If there was a developer that wanted to build, let's say, two buildings with, with two units each, so four, four units... two units each, so four, four units of age-restricted housing, that would comply with what our building codes are, and they wanted to be, they wanted to be age-restricted. The question then, then is, is the developer responsible to only sell it to people that are 55 and older?
Well, then you have to worry about resale, so where is the, where is the enforcement on that? You know, I go ahead and buy a multifamily and then I sell it.
Correct.
If I may?
Yes.
So usually, when you have an age-restricted development of any kind, it's part of the documents, so it would actually be in the deed, and any attorney would pick up on the fact that it's in perpetuity kind of thing.
Okay.
So that's your protection that way, if you, because, did I hear you say condos, age-restricted condos?
Let's just say a townhouse, to keep it simple, you know, or let's just say a multifamily, two multifamilies, age-restricted.
Yeah.
I guess I would, I guess, Laurie, the concern I would have is that you are not, that you cannot put anything on a deed that lasts in perpetuity.
Oh, I don't know that.
It's, it's got a 26-year limitation to it.
Oh, so, so the town in the bylaw, it can't read that? Is that a law that you can't do any restriction in a deed for more than 26 years?
I think that.
I haven't heard that.
Yeah, because that's what we've been told, and the reason I came up with that is with having a property that is not to be developed for, in perpetuity, that you can't do like a conservation restriction via, on something on a deed. It's got to be a CR.
Well, I knew, I knew that about wetlands and conservation.
No, it's, there's a case, you know, that I'm well aware of where there was something in the deed that the land could never be developed, and after 26 years, someone developed it, and basically, it's because you cannot by mass state law put something into perpetuity in a deed, that it expires after 26 years.
Oh, wow. Well, okay.
We can check with Adam, I mean, because I'm not an attorney, but.
Yeah, me neither.
I'm just wondering.
Well, why did you, why did you say, so can we just go back a minute?
Yeah.
There's a developer.
Yeah.
Who wants to do age-restricted housing, and you're gonna, and the example is townhouses, which means that the developer is not selling the units. He's just going to rent them.
Well, let's just say he's gonna, no, say he's gonna sell them. I'm going to go ahead as a developer, because what we have written here basically allows a developer some, you know, he doesn't have to comply with the multifamily zoning that we have, or those regulations or bylaws. We're making it easier for a developer to develop age-restricted housing.
Okay, so if, if they're going to be townhouses.
Yep.
Whether it's one building or two building.
Yep.
But they're attached, okay?
Okay.
So there has to be, in that case, so say that it was all four, will be easier to say this, but you'd have to do it even if it was two.
Yep.
There has to be an agreement between the two parties that's kind of like an association. You do a master deed, and the master deed says what the regulations are for their, the condex or condominium. You can't just have townhouses that are attached and not have a common association agreement.
Okay.
Okay, because the exterior, excuse me, the exterior is always common, and therefore the expenses of the roof or the exterior are common. Now, generally, it's the, one side is responsible for their side and the other side, but there has to be an agreement between the two. They have to agree on what the roof is going to look like. They have to agree on what the exterior is going to look like.
Yeah.
So I'm probably getting into something that you wouldn't have thought of in this, but that is what's going to happen. So if it does, that's the only way you're going to have multiple properties, multiple units on one property, because they're attached.
Yeah.
Is by having.
But we need, we need to say something, I think, in the bylaw on how it is enforced, if you know what I mean, even if it's enforced through an association.
Okay, okay, but you have, okay, you have to address it then.
Right.
You do have, there has to be an agreement between the parties when.
Yeah, Christopher, was there anything in Littleton's that did that?
Sorry about that, I had to find the mute button. I'm skimming through it right now, just seeing what some of the past language had. I thought that I saw something, I thought that I recalled seeing something about one party being 55 and older, but I'm not finding that, so, yeah, I must have imagined it. I even found one sentence that said, well, units do not have to be age-restricted by these adults 55 years and older, they must, they must have common meeting areas, guest parking, and be designed for people as they age. So I might take that line out.
Okay.
But it's something I could, something I could definitely look into. You know, I agree with you, how you enforce that could be tricky, but I imagine you probably do similar to the way that, you know, CDPG or Public Housing does income-restricted limitations. I mean, you, you would basically place a, place a, some language in, you would need that states that requirement, assign a contract with the landlord or the property owner that requires them to act accordingly, and if they don't, you sue them. But you guys, I believe, would know more about that than I would. But it's definitely something, yeah.
My only other thought would be that we could, we, you know, and I don't know if we want to do this or not, I sort of, probably the best thing to do is to just say, Adam, what's the best way to make this enforceable?
Yep.
And then I hate to, I have my last comment, and I hate to bring this one up, because, you know, sometimes mixing too many things up, but does it make, what about having this be affordable?
That's, that's definitely something I thought of. My personal opinion on that is it's always good just to be able to get some, you know, people with expendable income, but, you know, absolutely, if you want to make it affordable, that's something we could look into.
I'm just throwing out to the rest of the board members.
I'd like to see that, but, you know, it's, I, what I don't want is to make this too restrictive either.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was, you know, sort of hesitating bringing it up.
If hypothetically, if the developer wanted to, to put in a place, then it would always be, can be referred to the Housing Authority to talk about asking them to put one of the units as an affordable unit?
Okay, I think probably it's best just to leave, not touch it.
I, if we put the language in there, we'd have to, you can't do a little bit, you'd have to go all the way.
Okay.
Much like we did with the accessory apartment.
Okay.
Because that has to be regulated through DHCD and, and the state regulations as well.
Okay. All right, so then in summary, then, Chris, if you can sort of put the language in there that at least one party has to be 55?
Absolutely.
And then probably, I think the next step would be Beth to have Adam basically say, what's the, you know, what do you recommend to enforce this?
Okay, I have sent on the current draft to Town Council, and I'll follow up with an email with what you discussed tonight.
Okay, that's, that's the comments I had. Does anyone else have anything else before we?
Yeah, if I may?
Yes.
Where you've brought up a couple of different things, which we're obviously wanting to support, whether it's 55 and older or affordable. Why can't those be several options? In other words, this bylaw would refer to any one of those particular things that the developer wanted to do. Obviously, each one will have a different type of restriction, so, but we would allow for them to have that choice. Obviously, either one, say those two, I don't know what else was mentioned, but say those two would be a benefit to the townspeople as well as the town. So what would be wrong with asking Adam if that could be worded that way to give the option?
And to give the option on whether they wanted to just regular age-restricted, or they want to go affordable-age-restricted, is that what you're asking?
Either one or three. So, I mean, you might have a combination of all three, you might have, you might have it just be single. So in other words, only affordable, only age-restricted, or.
Or a combination of both.
Yeah.
I think that starts to really complicate things.
But I, I kind of like that idea.
But it's an option.
It's, it's an option.
So the option would be that the requirements would apply to age restricted, 55, or, or affordable?
Yeah, and if they didn't want to be, because there are some people in the age-restricted one, let's say, that would not fall into the affordable category.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but it would, either one would serve a purpose. You know, it would fill a void, if you will, in the town. So that's why I'm saying, if you're doing this bylaw, make it applicable to either-or.
Well, I guess my concern would be, and I'm the one that brought this up, so I should be smacking myself.
Yeah, sorry.
I guess the concern that I have is that if we tie affordable to this, it's going to be a much more challenge to get this bylaw approved.
But we're not tying it.
No, but if you make the bylaw say or, then you are essentially presenting the town with a bylaw for affordable housing.
Is something wrong with that?
I'm just saying that with my experience that we had with the accessory apartments and how that went over in town meeting, I think that, that it's going to be hard for a two-thirds vote.
I'm sorry to hear that, because even, even through this last process of surveying, affordable housing still comes up. So why they would be, I don't know, but it's, it's time for some readdressing of some thinking, when these are needs that have to happen. But, okay, but just my thoughts.
Okay, this is Carol, I'm getting confused. So is the affordable piece tied to the age-restricted, or is affordable housing is just anybody can live there that meets the income guidelines?
Let's just say currently, the zoning amendment as written is just for age-restricted. Someone, nameless, the chair, sort of thought about affordable housing, and the more, and I'm, my.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, my concern is that if we have the requirements for age-restricted and the requirements for affordable, my concern is, is that it complicates it. I would much rather get the 55-plus in, because I think that's a very high priority, and then work on making it affordable, I don't know.
Well, you know, I.
I agree, well, I think it gets complicated, but are you looking to intermingle? Just say, when you talk about all this affordable housing, I look at it as, you know, income-restricted, but that usually means family. And if you're doing an age-restricted housing, you tend not to, at least any of the age-restricted condominium developments, you know, you don't have kids there. So I'm not sure putting affordable housing and age-restricted together is trying to compete with each other.
No, that's not what I said.
Yeah.
I, I.
I guess, I guess I followed in you then.
Okay, so let's just separate it. I was just saying that in some cases, age-restricted does not mean income-restricted, okay?
The bylaw as currently written does not have any income restrictions, it just has an age restriction period.
Correct.
Correct. But that doesn't help the age-restricted that may need affordable housing.
Correct.
I'm, I'm saying keep it age-restricted, but allow for an age-restricted affordable.
Yes.
Okay?
I agree with that.
Open up to families and, I mean, and I'm not against it, but for this statement, it only means the developer has an option to go age-restricted or age-restricted affordable. In other words, they don't have to do affordable, but they could, under this bylaw, do age-restricted affordable. We're talking age-restricted only.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay, all right, all right, that's clearer, I was kidding. And why couldn't you have a developer say if he was developing, say, 20 units, have 10% of them set aside as affordable?
And, and that's, that's exactly where I'm going to put my two cents worth in. It's age-restricted, so you have to be 55 or older in order to purchase the, this property, or however we, we set it up. But the main point is that if we make it affordable as well, I think a portion should be affordable. Number one, I know the Housing Authority would like to have affordable units, but these are 55 and older units for individuals who may be age-restricted, I mean, who may be income-restricted.
Okay.
And, and that's what I think we, I mean, as far as the, the housing production plan that the Housing Authority is working on and all of that kind of stuff, this is perfect to keep people in town that maybe can't afford their current property, but be able to, to get something to stay in town and be 55 and older. So there will be an older facility that there won't be, you know, kids or family or whatever, it will be, it will be age, you know, appropriate for them.
Okay.
All right, so.
Yes, I don't, I don't see.
Yeah, let, can we just come back to this, and, because we have a public hearing that starts at 7:15?
Okay.
I don't, I lost my agenda, Beth, is that correct?
Yes, it is correct. 7:15 is the bell tower, the ball tower.
So has everyone had a chance to review the decision? And are there any comments from, well, so I should probably officially reconvene the public hearing. Does any board member have any questions on the decision that Beth drafted?
Um, I, I have, I have one. I don't know if it's a question or a comment, so I'll throw it out there and you tell me if it's either or. Did we get a definitive answer on whether or not that we're going to allow space on it for the fire and police?
Well, that's still in process. Mr. Boucher, who is here with us tonight, did send a response to my request probably today with some wording regarding the request from Chief Boynton regarding cell tower equipment. I did, before that, I did send him some details from Chief Boynton, and in the share drive is the email that I received from Mr. Boucher today. The draft that I wrote, the draft decision that I wrote, what I. The draft that I wrote, the draft decision that I wrote, I didn't have time to incorporate those, and there is one sentence on there that I have to bring up, that Mr. Boucher brought to my attention, and that is, if I could just pull it up, there with me a minute, is the contingency, the sentence about the permit being contingent on the cell tower, on the space for the communications, and that should be a condition, not a contingency. So, that has to be fixed.
Okay, that's exactly what I was referencing, Beth, because I did read that, and I did see that, as long as that's going to be put in there, then I'm good with it.
Okay, so you did see his email as well?
Yep.
Okay, so I haven't worded it yet into the decision, but it will be as a condition, not a contingency.
Okay.
And what is the language that he's proposing?
All right, let me pull that up. Should be in the file, I'm sorry, I gotta go back.
I'm looking at it right now.
You have it?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the condition is that, that the chief can put some equipment up there, provided the Town of Townsend's use will not interfere with any other use of the tower. The Town of Townsend's use of the tower does not revoke or invalidate any federal aviation administration or federal communications commission's authorization. The Town of Townsend is responsible for any costs associated with or resulting from the Town of Townsend's installation of equipment and use of the tower, such as a new structural analysis or government certifications required as a result of the Townsend's use of the tower. For the Townsend enters into a written agreement with SBA Towers LLC for the use of the tower, similar to agreements with commercial tenant, except the Townsend will not be charged a fee. The Town of Townsend agrees to defend and identify SBA Towers for any damages, claims, or losses caused by the Town of Townsend's use of the tower. And the Town of Townsend's use of the tower expires with the expiration of any special permit granted by the Town of Townsend's SBA Towers LLC or any signage use of the tower. That's a mouthful.
Would you like me to, and how would the board like that to be included and incorporated into the decision, I guess I should ask?
Gosh, I don't know why I even asked Greg to provide any language.
My son was supposed to-
Well, I guess, I guess the concern that I have is, is to have this reviewed by town council.
Oh, that's the next step, yep, that has not been done yet.
I mean, just because of the language here, I was sort of going to propose that, you know, that contingency would be that, you know, that the chief could put his stuff up there, assuming that it were as reasonable and does not affect the structural integrity of the tower. But this is quite detailed. So, I would think that I would just, Beth, put this as a condition and use the language as provided by Greg, and that really the board cannot approve this decision until town council reviews it.
Yep.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, and then would you like me to strike the sentence about, on page two, the board determined that the renewal of the permit is contingent upon the SBA Towers v. LLC allocating space on the tower for the Town of Townsend's emergency communications equipment? Should I strike the whole thing, right? Or no?
Well, what would you replace it with?
Well, I'm looking at the wording that we have here.
Would it be put in as an exhibit, or would it be part of the decision document?
I think, I think that it is, it's a condition of the decision, so I don't think, I think it's got to be put as part of the decision.
To kind of go right there in that spot?
So, I would-
Yeah, sorry.
I would plug it into, as a condition.
Yep, not a problem.
And I would use the exact wording provided, to be provided by the applicant.
Yep.
However, we need to have, we need to have town council review it. Not that I see it as an issue, it's just that I think that it's prudent in our standpoint.
Sure, yeah, that can be, I can send that up tomorrow, and not a problem.
Okay, and so then, are any other questions on this?
This is just Greg, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate working with you guys on this, I appreciate working with Beth, and I'll be available for town council for any questions.
Thank you.
SBA is, you know, willing to work with the town and try to make this happen. I don't know if we can do exactly the way the chief was asking, just because of some of the logistics, but I told Beth that my guide SBA can meet with the chief and person at the tower, talk to the chief, and we can try to work with you on this, so, you know.
Yeah, and I don't think there's anything in the conditions here, Greg, that, in my mind, are unrealistic. It's just that, you know, like, for example, you know, if the chief wants to add something, then I don't believe that SBA should have to pay for any sort of analysis to find out if it structurally compromises the tower.
Yeah.
But I do, when I see, you know, that we have to indemnify, you know, if the tower falls over or something, I mean, that's why I think it's prudent to have a just town council and, you know, Beth basically say that it might be, it might be better that if Adam has any issues with that, that he addresses that directly with Greg, so we don't get into this drawn-out process of going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
Okay.
Sure, yeah, I'll make-
I mean, unless any board members have an issue with that.
No.
Thank you.
Beth, did you get my email? My chronological question?
Yes, I did see it. Did I answer it? Oh, chronological? Oh, statement effects, where are we here? Statement effects is not chronological? Or?
Unless I misread.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, I wrote the section, that's pretty boilerplate right now, are you referring to the March tenth, twenty twenty state of emergency?
Yeah, like, why wasn't that first?
Okay, that can go first.
I was just questioning, was it for a different reason, not, you know, no criticism?
Not at all.
It just caught my eye.
That makes sense, yep. Okay.
Okay, so with that, I think that we should continue this public hearing until we have the appropriate language in the condition.
Yep.
So, can I have a motion to continue this public hearing until, when's our next meeting, Beth?
Well, I wanted to ask the board whether you wanted to meet on the seventh or the twenty-first. The seventh is coming up pretty quickly, and we were originally going to have the public hearing on that date, or the board was, so I don't know if you still want to have a meeting, or if you want to go ahead to the twenty-first. You have one application before you that needs a thirty-day comment period, so that's not going to be ready for the seventh, but I'll leave it up to the board.
Master Plan Committee's meeting on the twenty-first.
I would prefer to get this over with on the seventh.
Okay, sure. Seventh it is, good.
I mean, anyone from the board object? Okay, so then let's just continue this public hearing until December the seventh at six forty-five PM.
Don't move.
Okay, Chaz, how do you vote?
I'm sorry.
Second? Who's second?
I'll second.
All right, Carol seconded, Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Lori? Lori?
Yes.
All right, Lance, yes. Okay, so then hopefully we can get this buttoned up on the seventh, Greg.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, eight o'clock. Oh, gosh, we're going through this, all right, so, all right, so since our next public hearing isn't until eight o'clock, do we want to continue discussing three point three, which is the age restricted? All right, what do you propose, Chaz? Okay, well, let me ask a question then, because I'm confused. So, the purpose of this is to basically provide some zoning relief, if you will, for age restricted housing?
Correct.
So, what does adding affordability to it as an option, what does that do to improve the bylaw?
It just allows for the option.
Yeah, it just, it allows for, if somebody built four units, to have one of them affordable, it benefits the town.
Okay, so you're saying that if someone builds four units, three of them are age restricted, and then the fourth is affordable?
They have the option of doing either or.
But it has to be age restricted?
Yeah.
Yes, the whole place has to be age restricted.
But they don't have to have them all be affordable, or they could, it's an option that will allow.
What benefit would I have as a developer of making it affordable?
Probably none, unless we're very generous to person.
So then I'm trying to understand why we should do it in the bylaw, because there is nothing that would prevent a developer with its existing bylaw to make the age restricted dwelling affordable. He could do it.
Okay.
Right, which I think more general is more inviting, you know, instead of spelling it out.
And what I'm saying is, I think the existing, you know, existing as it's written allows it to be affordable or non-affordable, that's up to the developer.
Mm-hmm, no, I agree. In that way, we don't have to worry about the policing aspect of it.
I think we have to worry about the age restricted policing aspect of it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that if we make the two changes of, I mean, I'm in favor of making the two changes of, one, having the requirement that at least one person be fifty-five plus, or the owner has to be fifty-five plus, and then basically, any recommendations on Adam on how we can make this enforceable.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I'm okay with that.
Everyone okay? Geraldine?
Yeah, yes.
Lori?
Okay.
All right, Carol?
Yeah.
Okay, so Beth, if you could shoot over to Adam whatever Chris comes up with for the fifty-five-plus age requirement?
Sure.
And put that modification to Adam, and then ask Adam for his opinion on how to enforce this?
Yep.
All right, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else? All right, three point four, DLPA MRPC Townsend Chapter Forty-three D feasibility Grant.
I guess, if you guys have had an opportunity to look at the maps, or, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to go through the mapping that MRPC prepared.
Mm-hmm. What are your thoughts on this, Beth?
Oh, I think that MRPC has set it up so that we can, the next step is going to be talking to private property owners of the properties that the board identified, and then, what we have so far, I think the town is prepared to, once the owners have authorized their agreements, I think we're prepared to put in the application to the state. We have pretty much almost everything that we need to do that. And then the other step would be a town meeting vote to adopt MGL Chapter Forty-three D. So, I think, you know, I think at this point, it's outreach to the private property owners that have been identified in this particular exercise, and how to do that, and who would do that. Besides that, I think it's a matter of looking over the maps, making sure that, you know, you're happy with the deliverable from MRPC, and, yeah, besides that.
And then to put that on a Warren article?
Yep, and it would be on a Warren article to adopt the program. I don't know how the actual expedited permitting works, to be honest with you, so I would need more training on that, how the process actually works in town hall, if you will.
Was MRPC going to draft the article?
Um-
Or who's going to draft the article?
I think there's a generic draft article for that, that I could find, yeah, other towns have adopted it, so.
Okay.
Or town council would have it.
All right, so the action is to just review the maps?
The map, yeah, review the mapping that, in the spreadsheet, where there's, yep.
All right, so then we can probably try to then put this on the Dun barrel, Dun pile on December the seventh, then?
I think so, yeah, yeah, but I think, you know, I don't know who would want to take the action item of potentially talking to the property owners of the private properties that were identified and mapped, and talk about the program, and the potential for an agreement, you know, of having their property as a priority development site.
I'd be happy to do that.
Oh, yay!
That's a big one, too.
Yeah, that would be a big part of it.
We can vote on it, Lori, I'll vote yes.
Okay, super. So, everyone's going to review the maps, and then Lori, you're going to reach out to the landowners, or the property owners.
Yeah, do you know when I have to, do I have to do that by a certain time, or after we have looked at the maps and vote?
I think we should, go ahead, Beth.
Yeah, no, I agree, I think you should look at the maps, I think you should have a consensus as a board that you're happy with the deliverables from MRPC, who worked on this grant, and have another discussion about the properties, and, yeah, that would be my thoughts.
Okay.
That sounds good, so, all right, so we're all going to do this before the seventh. All right, three point five, safe routes to school updates.
I am corresponding with Veronica, we're trying to set up a meeting with Rachel O'Donnell at this particular point. We also are trying to find out interest from the schools that are there, so I don't really have much to report, other than, you know, once, I think once Veronica and myself and Rachel can sit down, I would like Rachel to be able to point me in the right direction on, you know, how I can reach out to the, we're really looking at police planning, Board of Selectmen in the school, and right now, we need to, we need to couple with the school, so I don't know if anything's going to happen until we hear from the school.
Would you like to invite them to a planning board meeting?
The school board?
A representative, well, you can't invite the whole board, though, I don't know, I guess you could.
No, but a representative would be good, if we could do that.
And then have Rachel as well, invite Rachel as well.
Yep, we can do that, because I'd like to be able to- Because I'd, I'd like to be able to, even if, if Veronica, myself and Rachel can do a Zoom meeting, if somebody from the school board can, can meet us at that, too, that would be even better.
That would be, yeah, more productive for you guys.
Yep.
Okay. I can try to make, set that up for you if you want.
Okay, so what I can do is that once, once we, we pick a date, I can give to you and see if somebody from the school board can, can meet us on that. It's a virtual meeting.
Sure. Great.
I would appreciate that and that would actually work out really well.
Okay, great. All right, 3.6 Reappointment of Master Plan Committee Member Cynthia Donovan Schultz. I think I mispronounced her last name.
Schuster?
Schuster, I'm sorry. So can I have a motion to appoint Cynthia Donovan Schuster to the Master Plan Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Cynthia Donovan Schuster to the Master Plan Committee.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Carol's second, so Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lance, excuse me, Jerralyn?
Yes.
Lori? Lori?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain, please.
Okay, Carol?
Yeah.
And Lance, yes. All right, Beth, notice from Town Council regarding, so I'm at 4.1, notices from Town Council regarding COVID.
Yeah, that's in, that's in the correspondence file. It's just an update, letting everyone know, well, town managers and planners and all of us folks, that the timeline has started again so that, you know, the work of the board is for special permits and, you know, subdivision control has been reinstated. So the, the changes made are in the letter, so you can read that. I don't know if you want to read it, Chaz, or just sort of review it on your own. But the good thing is that virtual meetings are allowed to continue. So we are, fortunately, we're set up and, and ready to go and we don't have any backlog, so I just wanted to let everybody know from administratively, we are on time and really in a great position. So thankfully for our, our public access channel crew. Yeah, we're continuing.
Okay, all right, 4.2 Notices from Townsend slash Other Towns.
I guess I can start off with the Townsend Housing Authority is, and the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust have a COVID-19 Emergency Rental and Mortgage Assistance Program. They have been, the Affordable Housing Trust has partnered with Central Massachusetts Housing Alliance to provide the Townsend residents with assistance with resources from the CARES Act. The, it has been posted on the town website in regards to that, but it is assistance for both rental and mortgage assistance. The, the programs that are available provide income eligible households with up to $4,000 to pay overdue or future rent or mortgage costs. And you can apply to both of programs that are available. And it's all online and it's online at Central Massachusetts Housing Alliance, that's CMHAonline.org. But you can find that flyer in the town website.
It's also on the planning board webpage, so.
Okay, and the Housing Authority, I plan on putting that up tonight.
I guess my concern, my concern is being able to inform the residents of the town is my concern.
What do you mean by that?
Well, I do not believe that, if I, I could be wrong and I hope I'm wrong, but I, I think that if I was to take a poll on the number of the residents that frequents the town website or the planning board's website, it's going to be relatively low. I'm just wondering if it might make sense to do a flyer and like post it at Hannaford or put several flyers together to make sure that the residents are aware of this.
It's already done, Lance, it's, the Affordable Housing Trust has been taking this, it's been posted on, on Facebook. They are bringing it out to local businesses. I guess the Townsend Business Association also is getting.
Okay, great.
Flyers for, for, for it, so yeah, this, the Affordable Housing Trust people are really trying to get this out, the word out.
Okay, super. And the other thought that we, I think we've done in the past, I don't know what we could do, how effective it is right now, but basically to have something sent home with the kids from the school is a way to reach a lot of people.
That's a good idea, I can mention it to, to the people at the Housing, Affordable Housing Trust.
All right, that's very good news, Chaz.
Lance, can I say something?
You can always say something.
On the website, it's, it's listed as COVID-19 Rental Assistance and I request, I just want to say that I requested today that they change that title to Rental and Mortgage Assistance because I'm afraid that people, if I saw rental and I had a mortgage, I wouldn't think to even click on it. I would think it doesn't apply to me. So I've asked for that update to be made, hopefully it will be soon, so that's all.
All right, anything else, Chaz, on notices?
There is, but now I'm having a problem viewing these.
I think, don't we also have Mortgage Assistant on there?
On the flyer, yes, but what Ronnie was talking about is how, how the, the title was on the, on the.
On the website?
Yeah, on the town site.
Okay, so the, just so Veronica knows that the flyer does have Mortgage Assistance on it.
I'm aware, I am aware of that.
Because it's on, it's on my Facebook, too, and I put it on Country Estates, I put it on my professional site and I've emailed it out to people.
Yeah, the flyer is fine, it's just that on the website, the title said COVID-19 Rental Assistance. And you don't even, the flyer isn't big enough on the webpage to see that it says, until you click on that link, you can't see that it is mortgage. So I've just requested that they change the title to Rental and Mortgage Assistance. Has nothing to do with the flyer.
Oh, very, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Were you able to pull it up, Chaz?
Well, I, I'm having problems with preview, I'm going to have to download all of these. Beth, can you help me out with these?
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
Or do you want me to just do them quickly?
Go ahead.
Other towns, so Town of Lunenburg is having a public, oh, they held a public hearing on October the 26th to make alter, alterations to their code for their subdivision regulations article. Town of Pepperell, Board of Appeals. Let's see. It's a property located on 4 Willow Street. It's, it's in October. And it's a notice of a decision so that the ZBA granted a variance. Now, they went town of Pepperell, it's a planning board notice of a decision. And the applicant was 151, whoops, excuse me, the location was on 3335 Hollis Street. It just says that they granted a decision, they didn't tell me what the decision was. But otherwise, it was such, it was for special permit.
I can't just.
Town of Ashby had a, Planning Board had a decision. Oh, decision of the board is to deny the application for a special permit for a marijuana cultivation of limited area on 238 Piper Road. So that was, that's interesting. And then Town of Pepperell, Board of Appeals, that a variance has been granted for an accessory apartment at 7173 Chestnut Street in Pepperell. And that's it from other towns. Any questions?
There's a local rapid recover planning assistance application announcement. Is that right, Beth?
Yes.
Yeah, you can read that one, that came in for, for the boards.
Please be advised that the Mass Development of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, Mass Downtown Initiative, MDI, has announced a new program designed to revitalize downtowns, respond to the effects of COVID-19 on local businesses and prioritize action and strategies. Applications for local rapid recovery planning assistance to revitalize downtowns and commercial districts, town centers, et cetera, are due on December the 18th by 3:00 PM, according to the DHCD, MDI. See details below. This is a technical assistance program, not a cash grant award. The MRPC is available to assist communities with the development of your applications, blah, 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 blah. Please do not hesitate to contact John Hume or me should you have any questions concerning this program. I, you know, apologize for duplicate emails. So Beth, how is this related to the, what we've already provided our businesses? Or is it one of the same? Did I lose, Beth?
I don't have any, this is, I'm, I'm learning about this for the first time. You can see this email's been dated today. So if you'd like me to follow up with Mr. Hume and find out more about it, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think we have to because I don't know how it differs from what MRPC has already helped us with.
Okay, yeah, I'd be happy to do that and I'll, I'll let the board know what I find out.
Okay. All right. All right, then we also have a TIP development memo. As part of the annual development of the Montechusis Transportation Improvement Program, the Montechusis Regional Planning Commission, MRPC and the Montechusis Metropolitan Planning Organization seek input from interested organizations, agencies and citizens. The TIP is a prioritized listing of transportation and transmit projects proposed for implementation during the next five federal fiscal years and the product of a comprehensive continuing cooperative effort to improve regional transportation system by local officials. Do you have anything to add to this, Beth?
Nope, that was, that was brought up at the MJTC meeting. And I don't think Townsend is affected by that, I'm just sharing that with the board.
Okay, is it something that if we participate in, could there be some benefit to us?
The TIP program, yes, but it is a process. It's, it's, Ronnie, actually, you could probably speak to that. Do you, do you want to add anything?
This, if, if we, the town, have any transportation projects that we want looked at, this is where it gets scheduled. So things like on the tip or things like the garage that they're building in air for the train station. Or if you want, if there are roads that need paved that are state roads, those sorts of things. So anyway, that's the deal.
And we currently don't have any applications in, right?
Not that I know of, no. I don't think we have any projects at all on the tip, Townsend doesn't right now.
Okay.
So that's something that we probably want to look at, but it's a futures thing. But, but now's the time to start thinking about the five-year-out timeframe. If we're interested in having buses come up here, anything like that, that's something to think about, but right now, I don't think we, I don't have anything in my head for doing it. We might want to talk to Jim Smith, see what he has, you know, in his head. But I'm sure he's aware of this as well.
All right, that would be great.
That's all.
And then the only other notification that we received was de-letting notification for residents on Bow Street.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so that's it for correspondence and we're right on time, 8 o'clock for the, for reopening the public hearing with regards to Center Street. And I see that Bill has joined us and Joan has joined us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think the last time I opened up the public hearing, we introduced the board members, we read the legal ad and then Stan jumped right in to basically request a continuance.
Yes, he did.
All right, so Stan, do you want to give us a, a brief, a little brief comment in terms of what this is all about? Stan? You're on mute, Stan. Can everyone else hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
All right. Stan, can you hear me?
Doesn't look like he's responding.
Yeah.
Let me give him a call.
All right. Looks like he may have nodded off. Oh, he's moving.
Oh, he's putting his glasses on.
Yeah. Stan?
I just got his office number, not Stan.
All right, how do we get Stan's attention?
Let me try chatting to him.
Can you even chat to him?
I, I sent him a message on chat and it doesn't look like he's looking at his screen, no.
And? All right, how do we do this? Do you have his cellphone number, Bill?
I do, but it's his office number, I don't have his cellphone.
Oh, Beth, do you have a cellphone?
She's on mute, too.
Oh, you have a cellphone?
All right.
All right, could you just send him a text message? I see him looking at his cellphone, I think.
He's checking his stocks.
Yep.
Today's not a good day to check. You look comfortable, Jerralyn.
I am. I just don't know how to move the screen.
I just don't know how to move the screen.
Is it a laptop?
It's an iPad.
Oh.
I did have it moving at one time and then it stopped, so I don't know. I don't know what I'm supposed to do with it. Although I've got this little circle, like, it keeps going around. What?
Stan, we're waiting for you.
He's calling somebody.
Beth, did, did you say you had his, uh, mobile number?
Okay, hi, everybody. Um, I do have Stan on my phone. He said his ID department decided that now is a good time to work, to work on the network, so. He is with us on there and, um, on my speakerphone if, um, and I'll be quiet and, and let him and you guys speak.
God, I'm, I, can he try to just unmute because his video's coming across great?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you try?
Unmute yourself.
Did you try, try to unmute? Cause you are, you are video right now. We see you.
Really?
Hmm. You can't. Ah, wow, all right.
Is he gonna unmute himself?
Remote, I'm gonna do something, so. But if you can see me in, you can hear me through Beth's phone, then I think we'll be okay.
Or, or, or what you could do is you could just join the meeting through the, um, audio dial-up.
Yeah, that's beyond my capabilities. I apologize.
Can you, is, is it, Beth, he can't, uh, he, he can't see what's going on?
Yeah, my screens are all, my screens are black, frozen.
Okay, um, hold on one second, um.
See if you can hit the spacebar. If you hit the spacebar, he might be able to, to unmute himself.
Anything?
Nope, nope, it's not working.
Okay, Stan, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, yep, I can hear you fine.
Okay, um. Why don't you, um, um, I'm gonna give you a number, okay?
Okay.
Dial area code three oh one.
Yeah.
Seven one five.
Yeah.
Eight five nine two.
Yeah.
You're gonna be prompted to enter the meeting ID, which is the same meeting ID, I think, as the, um, Zoom meeting, which is, um, eight two five, five one zero four eight nine five.
All right.
And then you'll have to enter the passcode, which is one nine zero seven eight two, and then you will be brought in, um, you know, your audio will come right through to all of our PCs.
Okay, let me try that. Thank you.
All right, bye.
Beth, uh, Beth, for our sign-in sheet, we just had someone join our meeting with the identification of K-I-W-I. Could you identify yourself, sir?
Uh, this is Stan Dillis.
Okay, that's Stan Dillis, but, uh, can, we hear you fine, Stan.
Okay, thank you.
We just have someone else that joined us that I wanted to have his identity.
Um, yes, it's Mark Cram, C-R-A-M.
Do you have that, Beth?
Yep, Mark Cram, thank you.
Okay, okay, Stan, go ahead.
All right, so this is, um, we're proposing twelve parking spaces for use by the rail trail, and originally, we had proposed these parking spaces to come off Center Street, but when we discovered that the assessors didn't have a map and parcel for the railroad property, and we did a little more research, we found out that Center Street doesn't really exist either. So that's all private property, so we are now proposing to come in off Depot Street to a, uh, what will be a gravel parking area. We'll create twelve parking spaces with one handicap space. It's very flat there, so we have, um, there's one little mop pile of stuff that someone dumped there. But other than that, we'll remove the, the grass, it's grass now, the grass and the, and the topsoil and place gravel with a very gentle slope towards a recharge trench on the, on one side of it, and that's basically it. It's, you could use it now as a parking area, it's so flat, but it's grass. So we wanna make it a gravel parking lot, and there'll be some signage, rail trail signage and handicap parking signage and that, and things like that. So the way the plan that you have, it shows that the parking spaces are on the north side of this parking area. There's some consideration to maybe putting them on the other side so they're in closer proximity to the actual rail trail. But either way, the, the drainage and the, and the shape and the configuration stays the same. So I, it's, it's a very simple, straightforward proposal. It's pure sand in that area, so anything that hits the ground will, will infiltrate, and like I said, there's a very gentle slope towards recharge trench on the north side.
Okay, um. Beth, is the plan up on the, in the folder?
Uh, it's part of the application, uh, if you look.
All right, so which folder do I look at? Um, I look at the application?
Yes, application, uh, and the site plan. It says two point four KD three twenty twenty, application site plan.
All right, hold on a second.
So at the end of the.
I see it.
Application, you have the site plan, yeah.
All right, hold on.
Carolyn, you want me to print that out for you?
I just wanted to understand this. So I'm looking at your plan, Stan.
Okay.
God, that even rhymes.
Make a new plan, Stan.
So I'm looking at the plan, and so all of these parking spots. So I, I enter this off from Depot Street.
Correct, correct.
And I can actually go in and out of each of those parking spots without, um, within that property.
Absolutely, yes.
So I am not backing up onto any, um, let me just call it Center Street or Depot Street.
Right, right. The parking lot will be self-contained. You'll enter and exit onto Depot Street.
Okay.
And it'd be completely contained within the MBTA property.
Okay, um, a question for Beth. Has, um, has the, this revised plan been reviewed by the various, um, referrals? So has the building commissioner, for example?
I have referral comments, Lance, that are, um, revised, that were revised on ten five and eleven thirty. I have a November sixteenth, um, continue to November thirtieth, so this is the latest revisions, um, if you want me to read that.
Well, I guess a first question to Beth. Did you recirculate this revised plan to all of the town officials?
Um, no. What were the changes, Stan?
The, the big change was, is that before, and correct me if I'm wrong, Stan, you would enter the parking space from Center Street.
Yes, that, that's correct. Now we're coming, now the access is off Depot Street.
And before, you would actually, to be able to, if I pulled in forward into a parking spot, I would have to back out of the parking spot and, and the car would be on Center Street.
Okay, so no, to answer your question, this has not been recirculated. Um, all the referral comments were based on the previous plan.
Okay, because some of the referral comments are not applicable.
That's right. This was received on November twenty-fifth, so this was a, a very recent, there wasn't time to circulate this, but I can, if you'd like. Yeah, I can certainly do that.
I think we have to.
Yep.
You know, we need to, since there was substantial changes since the last plan, um, it needs to be reviewed.
Yep.
And, um, one question to Stan, um, is the, um, the base that's being used for this the same as what was proposed before?
Yes, it is. It's a mass highway spec for the gravel base.
All right, um. All right, uh, Beth, have we received, or, or Chaz, any, um, written correspondence from any abutters or concerned citizens?
No.
Do we have any abutters or concerned citizens attending this meeting that would like to say something about this? Okay, um, I guess my concern is, is that I think that we unfortunately have to continue this until we get feedback from our other town officials on the revised plan.
Would any of the referral comments be applicable, though? I mean.
Um, I think, uh, in my, when I looked at it, there was, um, one that would be applicable. Well, I shouldn't say that. Um, why don't we do this? Chaz, why don't you go through the comments that we did receive on the first set of plans, because some apply?
Okay.
And we can address that.
Okay, on the assessor's office, there was no comment. Board of Health, no comment. Board of Selectmen, no comment, with expressed appreciation for the referral. Um, Building Inspector responded with comments. Number one, what type of surface is the accessible space going to have? And are you planning on following the requirements of five twenty-one CMR? The plan shows three-inch stone surface, which will not be sufficient for an accessible space. A minimum, you need to provide a compacted crushed stone base for your accessible space, even, uh, but even that needs to be delineated, presenting maintenance problems. Two, where is the accessible route? The accessible space needs to be in concert with the accessible route. Although admirable, an accessible space is not required based on the number of spaces you are proposing. If you do provide an accessible space, it must be functional and needs to fully comply with five twenty-one CMR. If you cannot comply to the strict provisions of AAB rules and regulations, for whatever reason, you may not be able to seek relief through a variance from the Architectural Access Board. Uh, he's quoting, um, the Bylaw one forty-five dash thirty-three C two, and its state's surface, all required parking areas, except those serving single-family residents shall be paved unless exempted on a special permit from the planning board for cases such as seasonal or periodic use, where an alternative, alternative surface will prevent dust, erosion, water accumulation, or unsightly conditions. Even though this is a seasonal, periodic use, this area will be open to the public and therefore needs to comply with the state, state's rules for accessibility as defined by the Architectural Access Board, uh, AAB and five twenty-one CMR. And the last one he quoted was, um, Bylaw one forty-five dash thirty-three C three, and it states backing, uh, parking spaces with five or more spaces shall be designated and located so that their use does not involve vehicles backing into a public way. Uh, and that was from Eric Chartrand, uh, Char, Chartrand, Building Commissioner. Conservation Commission responded with, in quotations, "The consultant confirmed NHESP demarcation is approximately four hundred feet south of the project," end quote. And that was from Dave Henkel's conservation agent. Um, Fire Department with no comment. Um, the Highway Department responded with, "Who will be maintaining the lot when the project is finished? Uh, I recommend all brush and debris are cleared and removed for visibility at the intersection of Depot Street slash Center Street. I would recommend paving the lot with painted white lines for parking." And that's James Smith. Uh, and the Water Department responded with no comment.
Okay, um, Beth, um, Peter Cunningham just joined our meeting. Um, are, are you here as an abutter, Peter?
No, I'm, actually, I'm here, I'm a member of Squanah Cook Greenways. I'm the.
Oh, okay.
Chairman Squanah Greenways, so I'm here as a.
I'm sorry, Peter.
Observer and participant, if I can help.
Okay, so, um, so I think, um, certainly the comment from the Building Commissioner about backing out of the parking spot does not apply, I don't believe.
Correct.
Um, Stan, do you have any other comments on, uh, what we've heard from the Building Commissioner?
Um, I would say that, you know, the, um, the, the Greenways people would like to have a handicap parking spot there, but according to the Building Inspector, we don't really need one, so I think it would simplify matters if we just eliminated that handicap, uh, parking spot, cause there is, uh, there is one proposed down at the other parking area down by, um, down by Shepherd's, so. And the rail, the whole rail trail is, uh, is handicap accessible anyhow, so. Um, I think that would alleviate his cons, both of his concerns.
What about the surface?
Well, he was saying the surface would, uh, for the handicap spot would need to be different than what we're proposing. So if we eliminate that, we would just be able to use the surface that we have proposed.
Um.
Yeah, I, if I could, I would also add the surface, that actually the surface for the entire trail is a stone dust, compacted stone dust surface, which, uh, which is handicap, uh, accessible and compliant.
Um, what about maintenance?
That's, it's gonna be part of, um, the rail trail's lease agreement, and they're gonna maintain it. That it's not gonna be a burden for the town to maintain. The town really couldn't maintain it, cause it's not town property.
All right, it's, it's always been our plan to maintain the, the trail with volunteers and have volunteer days. And, um, and I think, you know, that's just part of the whole, maintenance of the whole trail, which is gonna be our ongoing effort.
All right, so in summary, Stan, you're, you're basically addressing the, the, um, um, material, uh, by eliminating the handicap spot, and that.
Correct.
Okay, I think what we do need, um, in order to have all our i's dotted and t's crossed is to send the revised plans for additional referrals, but it doesn't sound like there's gonna be anything major. And so, does it make sense, Stan, for you to remove the handicap spot from that?
Yes, I'll, I'll send Beth the revised plan that, that I think shows the parking flipped, so it's up against the trail and not up against quote-unquote Center Street. That way, you know, there won't be the temptation, well, it's a safety thing, so people getting in and out of their cars won't, won't be in a traffic way, and it'll eliminate people trying to, you know, if you're pulled in there and you're pulled front, frontwards, the temptation would be when you were leaving to just drive out onto Center Street, and that's what the Building Inspector doesn't want, and we're trying to eliminate, so. I'll, I'll revise, revise the plan, remove the handicap spot, and send it out to Beth tomorrow.
Okay, so, um, let me ask, um, Bill. So Bill, do you have any urgency in getting this approved sooner than later? So in other words, does the seventh of December or the twenty-first of December, um, make any deal? I mean, are you gonna try to do something before winter?
Yes, absolutely. Um, we have Gary Shepherd out there right now, building the trail, and as part of this season's contract, he's gonna be putting in the parking area. And as part of this season's contract, he's gonna be putting in the parking area.
Okay.
Yes, we are very...
Alright, so Beth, do you think that it's feasible for us if Stan submits revised plans tomorrow to get our mandatory referrals back before the 7th?
Yeah, I would suggest maybe just Police, Fire, Highway, and Building Commissioner, or would that be acceptable?
I think we need to send it to everyone.
Okay.
Just to be consistent with what we do every time. Okay? And what we might wanna do is, you might want to accompany the letter to them saying that this is a revised version, and this is the substance of the changes.
Okay.
And Stan, can you provide that to Beth?
I can, yep.
You know what I mean? So that we can send it to, to a board and, and and then have them comment on us before the 7th. Which might be difficult if no other board is meeting, but I think that if we can get it from the ones that actually expressed the comment, then that's probably good enough.
Right, because I don't think you're gonna get much response if boards aren't meeting. That's only two weeks.
Yeah, I know. But I think if we hear...
Sorry, it's only a week from today.
Yeah, I know. I think that if we hear from Highway, if we hear something back from the Building Inspector, and anyone that said, and people that said no comment before, we can assume there'll be no comment again.
Okay.
So it would be the Conservation Commission as well.
Yep. Which I don't think...
I don't think they, they didn't have any comment before, so.
They did, but it, they did, but it's the same comment that's going to apply before, and it was just notify you that there's turtles close to you.
Right.
Right, they're actually 400 feet away, so.
Yeah.
I can, I can, even I can outrun them at that distance away.
Alright.
So Lance, the other point that was brought up was about clearing the lands, make sure you have good visibility when you pull into...
Yep.
And that's actually, I believe, in Stan's plan, it's quite clear that the brush is often removed.
Yep, yeah.
But it might be worth something to mention that in the, in the letter. Stan is saying the brush will...
Yeah.
We alleviate that other concern.
Yeah, the concern was the intersection of Depot Street and Center Street.
Right. And I think, you know, that this is a very, it'll be a very safe intersection because there's that, the stop sign is right there. So people are forced to stop there. That, they won't be, that way there won't be conflicts, as there might have been on Center Street with people going in all different directions.
Yep, okay. So why don't we then continue this until December the 7th? And what, when did, when did we continue the other one? What time? Beth?
So we have, it was 7:15, wasn't it?
No, it was earlier, I thought.
Earlier? You made it earlier, okay.
I think it was 6:45.
Hold on a second. I gotta pull up my agenda. I think I made it 6:45.
Oh, okay, so the cell tower is 6:45.
Right, and so we'll do this one at 7:15. How does that sound?
Cell tower, right, you're right, yep.
Okay, so can I have a motion to continue the public hearing for Squanah Cook Greenways, or whatever we're calling it, until 7:15 on December the 7th?
So moved.
Chaz, how do you vote?
We need a second.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry.
Second.
Alright, was that Geraldine the second?
Yep.
Alright, so how do you vote, Chaz?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And Lance is yes. And, okay, great. So Bill, we'll try to get this put on the dumb pile December the 7th.
Right, appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, so then you want a draft decision as well, right?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Be reviewed by December 7th, I don't think. So if you want Town Council review, it's probably gonna take longer than a week.
Yeah, but we can sort of vote yes on it, and then, gosh. You wanna take a stab at a decision?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we take a stab at a decision? Okay?
I don't think there's anything necessary.
Pardon?
Do you want a motion on that?
Yeah, probably should.
I make a motion to approve the Squanah Cook Greenways' proposed construction of 12 parking spaces on 9th Center Street.
Um, excuse me, I would like to, a little bit of discussion. I would like to have the amendment, the motion being basically to authorize Beth to draft a decision to be reviewed by Town Council, you know, for approval.
Okay.
Because from the time that the vote votes to approve something, there is a 14-day period in which it's gotta be filed by Town Clerk, or else it's automatically granted.
Okay. So I amend the motion to authorize Beth to draw up a decision and then Town Council review?
Yep.
And that would, and that would just more specifically would be a decision to approve?
Yes.
To approve, yeah.
Right.
Just to try to help Squanah Cook Greenways with the timeline they're on.
Yep, to get that moving.
Okay, I think we got through everything, Beth.
Yay, excellent.
Do we, do we need a second, and we need to vote on that?
Oh, we, gosh, how many, you know, I'm brain dead. Do I have a second to Chaz's motion to authorize Beth to draft a decision?
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks, Carol. Chaz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Lance, yes. Alright, so then can I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, can I please just make one comment? The appointment, the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen is December 8th. And you all received invitations, the planning board members, sorry. So that is for the appointment of Carol to the full-time position.
Okay.
It'd be great if you could be there.
Yep, I'll plan to be there.
Excellent.
Okay, can I say something?
Always.
So I just would like to encourage the board, the Planning Board, to listen to at least the last 10, 15 minutes of the last two-hour master plan meeting. I think it's very important for us to understand, as the Planning Board, how the members of the master plan, not all of them, but, you know, one was very vocal about the feelings. And after attending that meeting, and it was towards the end of it, it was extremely disheartening to think that so much time has been spent, well, not, maybe not spent, but certainly has gone by with so little movement. And, and to hear the feelings of that person, and I'm not gonna go into it. I think I'd like that the board themselves, Chaz knows what I mean, because he heard it. I think that all the Planning Board members need to hear that, knowing that we're waiting for, well, the plan should be submitted to the Planning Board once they're done. So that's all I have to say. I think everyone is entitled to their opinions, and, but I think...
Is that meeting recorded?
Yes.
It is, it's on YouTube. I, I think it would be very important for the full Planning Board to hear that.
Okay.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Chaz?
Yes.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes, please.
Carol?
Yes.
Okay, and Lance is yes. Alright, so we're adjourned.